Yeah.
So we've had, I mean, in my area, and I think both of them would say too, we do have some great community support. I'm not knocking that a bit. The problem is when you get great community support, you have to use that for your annual operating budget, or you have to use that to pay insurance, or pay your fuel bill, or whatever it is, and you can't improve because there's no additional funding. So when you're still only making the same amount of budget, and all those extra funds you're bringing in are just buying equipment just to keep you, if you're head above water, that's kind of where we're at. So Chief Gillespie's got some run numbers that he's going to go over with you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for listening.
I have a question. When you said seventy percent of water goes partially billed, sometimes billed through the insurance companies on wrecks and...
No, so wrecks and fires we can bill for. For EMS calls, we do not bill.
Seventy percent of these calls are EMS.
So what is going on with all the lift assists?
Those are considered EMS calls, so we don't bill for those.
That's hurting me bad.
The whole thing with EMS is, is the fuel going to the call. Historically, we've always had an agreement in Lawrence County where any equipment we use, as far as consumable stuff, seat collars, nasal cannulas, air oxygen mask, the ambulance services have always replaced that on scene. So if we go out and we use a nasal cannula, and we use a seat collar on a car wreck, we get that from the ambulance to recover before we go back to station. As far as the fuel...
They're going to build for that.
Yeah, they will build a patient for that. So they just don't use it off their truck. They give it to us, and we recover that.
They could get it replaced on their end.
That's been the understanding in Lawrence County since we started doing EMS back in the nineties.
If, they give it to us.
You mean sometimes they don't?
That's right. Unfortunately, that is true. Sometimes if we have an ambulance that doesn't have it on it, or if they don't give it to us. Historically, they've been pretty good about giving us what it is. But the other thing is, we have a frequency in Lawrence County where we don't have Lawrence County ambulances on our calls. So we have quite a few calls where we have ambulances from Orange County and Monroe County, and those agreements aren't in place with those ambulance services. So we have some places where we've got firefighters on scene thirty, forty minutes waiting on an out-of-county ambulance.
So yeah, that's what I ask you. So when you service these wrecks, are you go, how often are you getting good ambulance response?
Um, it just depends. So good ambulance response, um, we always get good ambulance response. As far as timely...
That's what I mean, timely is it?
There's a pretty large percentage that we're waiting on out-of-county ambulances. So there's quite frequently that we're waiting on Orange County or Monroe County, and there's even been some times here lately where we've been waiting on Jackson County to come in.
Jackson County. I mean, and we're not really involved with ambulance, but I mean, I get that question a lot of where we're at. And I just kind of wonder what your guys' view was on that.
Like I said, we've got firefighters waiting on scene, and all the volunteer departments are basic life support. So we don't carry anything for the paramedic level or anything like that, because one, we couldn't afford it. It's the main reason, and the insurance and the equipment and stuff that you would have to carry to be advanced life support. So they're all basic life supports. So they're maybe on scene with somebody with a serious health condition, thirty, forty minutes waiting on an ambulance to come from out-of-county. So dispatch is pretty good about calling outside the ambulances will come to the county line, where they've got agreements to, where those stage and stuff like that. Monroe County usually comes to Johnny Junction, and South, they usually come up to where?
Orange County line.
Orange County line and stage there. So dispatch does good about getting those ambulances up. But there's such a high frequency that all of our ambulances here are either in service or gone on transporters that, like I said, thirty, forty minutes is not a uncommon thing for a volunteer department to be on scene, treating a patient waiting on an ambulance to get there. So, okay, that's all I got. I'll let Paul talk about our call volume, and then we'll see you again in about three months.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you everybody for letting us come up here and do this. This was quite daunting to gather. It's nine volunteer fire departments who've never done anything like this before. So trying to gather this information was interesting. I wound up with the spillment report, and so far, from January one to March twenty-ninth, there was one hundred and fifty fires in Lawrence County, seven hundred and eighty-three EMS calls, forty-two accidents, three technical rescues, which we wrote, water, eight gas leaks, and five service calls for a total of nine hundred and ninety-one calls in eighty-eight days between Perry, Marshall, Pleasant Run, Indian Creek, Aliddick, Shawsway, here in Marion, and Mitchell. And it doesn't reflect Bedford Fire Department's number, if you're to have it a secret. Like Jason was saying, you know, ten thousand dollar reward, and when he said that, I was thinking about that. There are departments out there that that's more than half again their budget. Your department, in your area, I have no idea how they're standing there.
And I mean, like, five years ago, I was served as advisory board, and we went through a little TIF, having a fire contract. And, you know, the community support for that fire department was overwhelming. When they got to that point, I mean, you could see how much residents really concerned. I think some of them made it to the State House because they didn't feel like they were getting enough attention.
I know, I know two or three of you, I think, that lived inside city rooms in Bedford, but the rest of them were pretty well affected by what happens with us out in county. The big issue right now is sustainability. Working on today, just today, since midnight, I've been on four calls. Two of them fires, or two EMS calls. I've got a group of young men, you've seen most of them, they're in their young twenties.
I've seen some of those young.
Yeah, young men meet young girls, and they make smaller versions of themselves. So leaving old guys like me, Bobby, and Jason to do everything, and we're not getting any younger.
I am, you know. Recognize Bobby.
Out of the three of us, I'm the youngest. And I'll be fifty. So, yeah, the big thing with me is sustainability. What we're doing, we cannot sustain. It's, at some point, it's going to come to a head, and if you live outside the city limits, you're going to be the one that suffers for it. And I'll tell you the same thing I've told my board, my fire board about the ambulance situation. It's, well, we don't know that it's a problem, because it's not been used yet. When I'm standing over you, shrugging my shoulders, going, if I could just get you to the hospital. And there have been thirty, forty-minute waits. There's been times where we've been asked, can you not put them in the vehicle and take them to the hospital yourself? Which we can't.
And that's important because even though we don't live outside of the city limits, we drive.
Yeah, if you travel outside of the city limits, and once these departments start going, like I said, we've already lost two. And, you know, it's a lack of volunteerism, and that's a way, I know they've already declared a crisis, that they don't have enough volunteer firefighters. The entire state has declared a crisis. They have set up things like vocational schools, bring young kids in, give them firefighter one and two, basic EMT classes, so they get to grab and run, and get some interest in the fire service. I've been twenty-seven years as a volunteer, only at Marion Township, and twenty years as sheer crane as a career firefighter. So I like it when they get jobs like that, but except they're young men, and what happens to young men?
Things change, wouldn't they?
Yes, things change real quick, so.
Yeah, they have to love the, they have to love the work, because there's no other reward.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't do it to get rich. If you're a career firefighter, you're not doing it to get rich. Well, Jason probably is.
He's had many donations, though, right?
Way, way bigger pay grade than I am at work, so, you know, I'm not doing it to get rich, and I'm not doing it in Lawrence County to make any money. What we do now, it costs us money every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, but yeah, just a little bit of, you know, reporting, counsel, let you know that we're out there, and this is what we're doing.
Well, I appreciate that. Call over back.
See you in three months.
Yes.
Okay, that works. Thank you very much.
Bobby? Oh, you might want to throw in some advices.
I haven't even recognized you anymore.
Huh? Yeah, I've lost a little bit of it. I'm Bobby Brown, I'm the Shawsway Fire Chief. I want to explain something a little bit, because I was just sitting there figuring it out. You've got a hundred years of firefighting experience, and those three guys right here. Okay, I've been on Shawsway for forty-one years. Okay, I've done this for forty-one years. And you know this as well as I do, you've been part of our township. Though what, some of the things they didn't, what they did left out was training. Okay, training. You know, these firefighters had to have hazard man awareness, hazard man ops, firefighter one, firefighter two. Okay? That is forty, eighty, plus sixteen is ninety-six, plus another eight. That's a hundred and eight hours of training they had to have to even fight a fire. Okay, and that's on their own time.
Does the training cost?
Right now, training doesn't cost, if you go to a district class, if you go to the advanced classes, yes, it does cost a little bit of money. Like Jasper Fire School, DuBois County has a fire school where several firefighters went down in the county, they went down there to have classes down there. But right now, the state of Indiana works through a District Eight Training Council. There is training, any training council anymore, it's just basically done by the state. And they offer free classes. All you got to do is show up. But the problem, problem you get with that is, you know, you get them started, and they get about halfway through it, they drop out because of nothing involved, no thing. But we put on, I don't know how many classes have we put on in the last, several firefighter one, two, and hazard man awareness ops classes for the county and for the district, and we've had good response. We did, we've kept, we've kept twenty to twenty-five students in these classes. So it's a big overtaking of, you know, of what we do. But am I missing anything out on the train? Am I missing something?
Just that's part of the reason it's so hard to keep volunteers, too, once they come in and join. They don't realize that the commitment on the front end. And the fact that, like I said, seventy percent of our run volume is EMS, so in addition to the fire classes, if they want to go on EMS calls, they got to be EMS certified, so.
That's about another hundred hours.
That's another hundred hours for...
How do they do, so online stuff and in-person stuff?
EMR, EMR and EMT is done in person. Okay, even your fire classes, they started doing the fire classes online whenever COVID hit, but they got to respond for it. You got to still do your practice, okay? You've got practical skills along with this training that you have to complete and pass before you can go on. But there's just a lot of, lot of things you don't know about. And then you're talking about two meetings a month where you train continuously. You've got EMS meetings that they had to come, you got to maintain that hours to keep those on. You had to have so many hours every two years to keep your EMS certified. So there's training that you have to do, and you can do some of that online, but most of it is done in-house. So, I know a lot of you here, we're just talking about the ARP money. I know that other townships or other counties, like Decatur County, I know they have gave volunteer fire departments over there, because the president of the IBFA lives in that township, and he told me that they got money through Decatur Township. Now, I know commissioners back here run that, and how they done that was through the community foundation.
Yeah, you guys got to understand, we're not forgotten. You guys, Jason came in front of us, and we told him we would do anything we could. We got a line from Baker Tilly as consultant, they're still waiting on the final rules.
Right.
That ever happens. But there is a way for that to happen, they think, but it takes time.
Right, and I understand that.
And it has to be in, with the council to pay for general funds or so on, and we can't give you ARP money. But we can possibly do it through a general fund and pay back the general fund with the ARP money. So those are the things that are in process.
Right.
So it's not like you're, we don't care, or we've forgotten, we're just working on things, we're moving slowly.
And I think everyone's open mind, I think commissioners are open minded.
Oh, I know you are. We just talked to Scott this morning about this, this is going to be, this is not a council issue, it's not a commissioner's issue.
If I think, if I think, open up the conversation, understand their concerns, and the position they're in, our concerns, where you are. I mean, it doesn't have to be a TIF, I think.
No, I don't think it's a TIF at all.
No, I don't, what I'm just saying, I think as long as we try to communicate and do what we can, I think that's, that's the starting process. And I had this conversation with Chief Gillespie some time ago, that, you know, compile this information, come, and, you know...
And we want you to know what we're doing.
Right, and I think it's good, and I think people that, in their townships, through their trustees, knowing what they're getting for that contractual agreement they have with the trustee. And, you know, I know we didn't bring to light what most of those contractual agreements are, and the monetary fund, it's not a lot. I mean, some of them's really small, the townships have to pay. And it's, it's hard to have a budget that goes very far.
Well, they're showing up here, they're taking their time, too, and they're not going to pay for that, so I really appreciate it.
Well, a lot of my, my things, how many here remember what it was like nineteen fifty's, nineteen sixty's outside of the city limits?
I can tell you. Because I'm old.
Very few.
Because I'm old.
There, there was nothing.
And you're right. You're segment.
And that's why I don't want to see it going back.
It's like you said before, though, if you don't have that need, you don't, you know.
No, back then, there was a need, there just, it wasn't there.
You know what?
Why don't I start to strike?
I'll tell you what.
And I didn't.
Sixties and seventies. Shawsway Volunteer Fire Department started in nineteen seventy-four, okay? In nineteen seventy-three, my neighbor's house, I sat on the fence. And I'm not knocking anybody here, but this is the way it was. In nineteen seventy-three, I was sitting on the fence on my mom and dad's property, and my neighbor's house got on fire. All right? I watched the Bedford Fire Department pull up, what they was contracted for, okay? With two persons, one truck. As soon as they ran out of water, they left and went back. They done exactly what they supposed to do, okay? And that's the reason Shawsway Volunteer Fire Department is here today, because that guy, his house burned, started because he didn't want to see that happen to those people. Okay? And I'm not downing anybody about that, it's just the way it is.
Who was the guy that started?
Bob Woods.
Same, same way in Marion in nineteen seventy-two. They got there, seen people's houses burned down, so they started the fire department.
And as I said earlier, I realize you guys are doing the consulting and all that. It's not a jab at you, it's, it's hardly issues with the process as a whole, because...
We have that issue.
We're doing what we're doing. We completely understand, you guys have a consulting firm, and you're following their guidance, and that that's what you're supposed to do. That's why I stated that when I was up there. It's not, it's not a gouge or a tax tip at anybody. All we're doing is trying to protect our agencies, same as anybody else.
Well, I, I just want to say one thing about Ken Scott. I actually talked to, I personally talked to Baker Tilly last week, and we were talking about this very issue, the fire departments and so forth. There are, there are cases right now that are, that are under review, trying to utilize the ARP funds. And there's legal issues involved in them, and they've not come to a conclusion on those. It could come either way. It could fall down to where we're able to do it, or it could fall down to where we come back and go through the council and take ARP funds and put them into general, and general then turns around and gives money to the fire departments. I don't know how that's going to work, but we certainly don't want to do anything where at the end of the two thousand and four, or two thousand, or twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, and we got to come up with money out of county general fund to pay back.
Exactly.
That'd be hot.
Understood.
And then along with that, I want to, we want to try to help you guys, but what, I personally don't want to say that this has got to be used for PPE or for a truck or whatever, you know. Paul's wanting to build a station, me to build a station. You may have a truck you've got, but we're always trying to get an ambulance going. We just want, you guys know what your department needs, that needs to be funneled to you.
That would be our hope, more, because every department is different on what their needs are. We just want to see it go towards some kind of sustainable something. So facilities, apparatus, equipment.
Personally, I don't care if you stick it in the bank for your rainy day for your department. I mean, you guys as chiefs and your trustees are going to know what you need in each one of those areas, but we don't. But we have to jump through these hoops and not get ourselves in the news to do that, so.
The last thing I have is, most of you know, and some of you have been to some of my meetings, the final meeting for the territory is thirty-first, Thursday night. The public is welcome, okay? But don't, won't be, no speaking from the public, because they've had their three meetings. All right? And I appreciate everybody did show up and had their concerns, okay? But we'll see.
So that's the process, you, you make the decision that night?
They'll, they'll either sign it or deny it, Thursday night. That's the only thing that's going to go on, having to, they'll, they'll vote between the two township boards. It's not even the trustees involved, it's the boards. And once they make the decision, they sign it, then we, we'll become a territory. And then January of twenty-three, our hope is to, we'll, it will happen, we'll have another ambulance for nine-one-one in this county. And it'll be just nine-one-one calls only, there will not be any transfers, so.
Can you explain a little bit of that? Because I know Scott's been, I've been, Rob's been, Destin's been, about the ambulance service and going to the four people on duty all the time.
There'll be four people on duty all the time. The ambulance will be staffed by an UT, well, it'll be cross-staffed, what you call cross-staffed. They have to be firefighter, EMR, or firefighter EMT. The EMT has to work, EMT has to work every day, because that's how you staff your ambulance. You're allowed to use first responders as drivers, okay? Because then the other two will be dedicated to Shawsway, you can go through townships.
And that ambulance stays in the county?
That ambulance will not go out of county.
That will not be used for transfers?
No, no transfer. I mean, look, hospitals have to transfer, okay? They ain't got a choice, okay? You're talking about two big corporations that are telling them what to do and what to do, and they're going to do transfers. We do not, I don't have to. All right? I can do just strictly nine-one-one.
So that might not cut the wait times down that he was talking about?
Yeah, I mean, Jason was talking about waiting, and we had two runs back-to-back. We had a rollover on fifty, and then we got called out for the lift assist, okay? I went to the lift assist, okay? And my ambulance was coming from Pailey, okay? That lady was really hurt, and when she did fall, two days later, it broke her wrist, okay? But the fact of it is, we got, if I, that person would have been hurt, we was out of ambulances, and I was waiting on an ambulance that left Pailey when I got there. So it would have been probably thirty-five minutes anyway, waiting on that ambulance. Okay, and I'm not knocking the ambulances there, they do, you know what I mean? But they're overwhelmed.
So you...
If I can, just to give you something about the ambulance, Bobby will remember this, and the sheriff will remember this. Two-car accident in front of Route RB, if every ambulance out of Lawrence County. And one out of Lawrence County, and three in Old Halls.
It doesn't take long for our resources to be in there.
And that's, that's the hope, the ambulance will run in the whole county, okay? Including City Bedford, okay? If we're called by dispatch to go to an ambulance run, we'll, we'll respond.
So by creating the territory, you're going to generate enough money to run an ambulance?
I'm not generating much.
Does that mean that's...
Because I, I can give you an example, because I've shared this with Mike, and I think you also. The IBFA done a third-party study on each township, okay? The volunteers is saving the state of Indiana...
Eight billion.
Eight billion dollars.
How much?
Eight billion dollars.
Lawrence County is sixty-four million dollars that we can save from having volunteer fire.
By having volunteer fire departments, okay? You're saving. Guthrie's, I just know my townships, okay, that I deal with. Guthrie's would go up to five hundred and seventy-seven percent on their taxes if they was a paid fire department, full-time paid fire department. Shawsway Township would go fifty-eight percent, okay? They, they spent a lot, IBFA spent a lot of money on this study. They wanted the State House to understand how much volunteer really mean to your community.
Didn't Governor do something, right, the last of the session, or the legislature, something about phasing these departments in?
Well, you're talking about the territories?
I don't know, I, I didn't read them, I just heard that he had done something, and I wondered if it was...
I haven't seen anything come out of legislating to help us this year, I mean.
Do it with getting traction to...
I don't think I even doubt it, so.
I, I just heard that, and I don't know any more about it.
I mean, Shawsway's still going to stay a volunteer fire department. We're still going to have volunteers, okay? We're not going, just on, you can't, can't fight a house fire before personnel, okay? So we're staying a volunteer fire department along with this territory.
Well, thank you.
If you can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next we have Prosecutor Sam Arp, and I don't believe he's here.
We just detailed spy.
Sheriff, just for Sam.
That's for Sam, Sam's not here.
Looks like that Sam Arp sent an email showing, I guess, the cases, new case violence by his local agents, or by local agencies. He's showing Bedford Police Department, level-two felonies four, level-four felonies two, level-five felonies eight, level-six felonies fifty-eight, and misdemeanor seventy-two, for a total of a hundred and forty-four.
Okay. Take care, take care, Scott.
Lawrence County Sheriff's Department's level-one felonies one, level-three felonies two, level-four felonies three, level-five felonies six. Level-six felonies thirty, misdemeanor thirty, for a total of seventy-two. Mitchell Police Department arrests, he had level-five felonies one, level-six felonies thirteen, and misdemeanor nine, for a total of twenty-three. Aliddick Police Department, level-five felonies one, level-six felonies three, misdemeanor three, for a total of seven, for a total of two hundred and eighty-six new case violence, that's for Sam Arp, prosecutor. So with that being said, looks like we'll go and go to Sheriff, Mike Grant. How are you?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Good.
Guys, it's a kind of, it's a kind of pair, that's part of the news.
All right, jail counts this morning, one hundred and fifty-five, which is eighty-six percent of our capacity. Going back to twenty-nineteen, which was twenty-twenty-one, are not really good years to look at for the COVID. The same time period, exact same number, a hundred and fifty-five. That summer, we reached over two hundred in the summertime. So we're kind of on that same track right now. We've been steadily climbing back up as the weather winds up, which is normal, that's normal weather every year. We have a hundred and twenty-seven males, twenty-eight females, three convicted level-six felons, five department corrections holds, and one parole hold. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention. One, and I'm, this isn't going to shock anybody, but I took a look at our gas budget today.
Never dreamed this.
We are projecting at least sixty thousand over budget right now. If prices stay where they are. But that's just, you know, we'll, we'll deal with that probably in October, September, something like that. But just wanted to throw that up on your radar. I gave you out a lot of paperwork today. I apologize, but it kind of all hit at once. The annual jail report should be one of the items you have. I'm not going to go over all that and read it. You can look at that in the free time and let me know if there are any questions. This is data on the jail, and information about the jail, and the issues that we have, and programming, and so on, that we offer. The other thing that I can unit out, let's go with this one first. You should have our Lawrence County Police Retirement Plan.
Is this one you did the study on?
Yes. So if you remember, a few years ago, we changed our investment advisors for our retirement plan because we were not satisfied with the people we were doing business with. We didn't feel like we were getting the return on our investment that we should, and the fees were higher than they should be. So we explored several options. We landed on German American Bank, and they have done an outstanding job for us. That change has moved us from a seventy-percent funded retirement plan to, by the end of this year, will be eighty percent funded. And my entire career, we have not been over eighty percent funded. So we've, we've really improved, and that's in large part thanks to you all for properly funding it and the budget. So we appreciate that. If you have any questions about our investments, let me know. All right. This piece of paper, looks like an invoice, and then you should have some policies. One is kind of example of a use-of-force policy from the Lexipol manual, which is our law enforcement policy and procedure manual. The other is the... Uh, the other is the jail policy on use of force. They're, they're completely different, they're, the jail policy is very outdated, it was from twenty thirteen. Um, and what I'm proposing is to do the same thing we did with our law enforcement training manual with the jail manual, and completely update it with, uh, modern technology, web-based. Uh, officers can look on their phones on a app and see what their policies are. Um, so, and then it will offer daily training bulletins, uh, updates. The company has a team of lawyers that, um, tracks all changes to law, case law, anything that would affect the, the policies and procedures and the way we operate in the jail, they would pass that on to us, so we can make changes to our policy manual on a live, basic basis. So, it's, it will help us to avoid a lot of liability down the road. Uh, it is expensive, it's, it's not a cheap venture, and you can see, it's, the year one fee is twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty cents. We have, um, and I'm not asking for a vote on this tonight, I need an additional appropriation, uh, but you'll see it next month. And I'll be asking for an additional out of public safety, low with, um, unappropriated. So, we have about two hundred thousand dollars unappropriated in that budget, so I would like to pay for that out of this.
The total request is?
Twenty-seven one?
Twenty-seven thousand, three fifty-three, thirty. And then annually after that, it is, um, just under seven, or just under eight thousand, as part of the annual subscription.
Can we budget for that?
Yes.
We could email, if you could summarize that, because since we have two council members missing, if they could kind of maybe be a little bit privy to what we're talking about the next meeting like we are here.